I would like to call to order the 2019-2020 budget hearing. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Present.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Mr. Noble?
Here.
Ms. Zinser?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Jen?
Right, thank you. What we go through tonight is just, actually, just a very brief intro and review of our budget. We did go through this in a much more comprehensive fashion. It was presented and reviewed preliminarily with the Finance and Operations Committee on June 24th. It was also presented to the Board at your July 15th meeting. At that point, you approved to have it on display and available for questions and concerns if there were any. You set a hearing date for tonight, and you must adopt a budget by the end of your first quarter of your fiscal year, which is by September 30th. So, that'll be on your agenda later this evening for approval. Between July 16th and September 1st, we actually take that opportunity, and we monitor within our office what are the changes. Because as you know, typically, we're working on budget development in the spring before the year is finalized, before all the placements are known for fall, things of that nature, before all our revenue pieces are known. At this point, we did not make any changes to the tentative budget as it was originally reviewed on the 20th, 24th of June or the July 15th meeting. We do have some minor changes, but nothing at this point that we would think warrant an actual change or amendment. We will present any updates related to that through the Finance and Ops Committee and through our year-end, year-end projection process. The Board can choose to amend their budget at any point if there was something large enough that we felt we wanted to amend. We would follow the exact same process by placing it on display and then voting on it to amend it at a later point. Quickly, to look at the revenues, we talk about our revenues arriving from four sources. Those are our local, state, federal, and what we call other. By and large, I'll give you the visual. The property taxes are our largest source of those local funds, so I do break them out between property and other local. We get very little state, very little federal, and very little other or transfers. Federal is primarily tied to grants and things of that nature, so it's very restricted revenue that we receive. Expenditures, we do follow the state chart of accounts, and that requires a classification within salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, other objects. That's where your debt payments are and your tuition payments for your special education programs and termination benefits. So, included in your packet tonight, there are two actual views of that. There's a district budget report, which will break various things by those same objects that I've just presented. And you'll also have the state form, which is what we are actually required after the Board approves to adopt the budget to upload. To give you kind of the pie version of that, you can see that salaries across all funds are 51.5%. When you add in our employee benefits, you're at 60, 62.6. Additionally, some of the salaries that you even see in this room tonight would appear a little bit in purchase services. All of your shared service employees that belong to the other district are actually considered purchase services. So you need to look at those three slices of the pie to really see your labor pool. The remaining pieces, you can tell, are much smaller. Your debt services and other, that's at 16.1. A little bit of capital outlay, some supplies, and then your termination benefits. So just to kind of give you one snapshot of where does our money go. In the budget that we presented to you tonight for final approval, we did have some operational and non, optional and non-optional items in the five-year capital plan for technology that was presented and reviewed by Jordan. There are facility and ground improvements of approximately 1.8 million. Those projects were detailed in the literature presented at those other two meetings, and also 117,000 in equipment and vehicles. Taking a look at our all-fund summary, this is a three-year, so you can see our 17, 18 budget, 18, 19, and 19, 20. You can see the trend across time. Keep in mind, of course, that the property taxes for last year were artificially low because of when they arrived. There was a timing issue for that. Expenditures as well, you can see the percent change is from the prior year. So we have salaries in at 2.41% greater than last year. Our benefits are actually down, and so on and so forth. When you take a look at revenue over expenditures, you can see that we have revenues of 52.1 and expenditures of 52.5, or a negative 451,000. Keep in mind what we're doing with the one, and the reason we highlight the 1.8 million dollars in projects is we are utilizing some of our reserves to fund our capital projects. We will remain above our Board policy fund balance target of 10% with the budget that we have on for approval tonight. And as I mentioned, we will continue to monitor that and give you any updates on where we feel that we will end the year, if there's any been any great variances to our budget. And then finally, the 19, 20 budget becomes important because we'll have conversation this fall when we talk about our five-year projection. What does it look like for us down the road? This will become the baseline for that projection after approval tonight. I am happy to take any questions if there are any.
Jen, can you talk about some of the key assumptions that are embedded in the budget?
Sure. Well, what we do is, as you saw when I said between labor, you're covering 60-some percent plus. Obviously, we start with what is known and what is unknown. So we know how many FTE we have, which is what we call our full-time equivalents, how much staff that we have in every area. Every place that we have a known contract, whether it be for staff or for a consultant or for a placement or a student placement, we will put those factors in. The things that are left, we make reasonable assumptions. If we had open positions, we consider those to be determined, and we fill those in based on trend. We look at our health insurance and do the same thing. What are our trends, what are our enrollments, what are our numbers look like? Our open enrollment doesn't actually end until September, so we make assumptions on how many people we think will pick up health insurance, and of those, how many will pick up family? And of those, how many will pick HMO versus PPO? So we're looking at those data and those trends, and we're kind of building them in. Things that are smaller in nature, such as supplies and things like that, we do actually get a department-by-department budget request from the individual building and also within every single central office area. So those numbers are typically submitted to us with information behind them on what the specific request is for. So they're pretty solid. The things that will vary are typically the things related to special education out district placements, which could change our budget from one day to the next to the tune of $100,000 or $200,000, depending whether or not we're able to bring a student back or if we find, need to find a better suitable placement for them elsewhere. So those are the, a little bit less known items and probably the most variable at this point.
Seeing no other comments, may I have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing?
So moved.
Okay, may I have a voice vote?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
All right, and thank you, Jen. That was a good presentation. I will now, I will now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for September 9th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Zinser?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Here.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. Noble?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Great, thank you. So, we'll start with the President's report, which is mine. So I'm happy to be here with the D-115 Board Administration at the start of another school year. I hope that our students and our teachers had a fantastic fruitful summertime that allowed them to come back to our school year fired up and ready to go for great things. As a father of two seniors at Lake Forest High School, I can, I can tell that the slower pace they enjoyed over the summer is now over. You know, I've come to appreciate, over the course of the past few several years, the curriculum the kids pursue, the extracurricular activities they pursue, athletics, the arts, clubs. But now, as the father of two senior boys in the month of September, I have a newfound appreciation for the stress these, these kids are put under with the college admissions process. It is daunting, and it's kind of freaky. So, it's with that, seeing that, that I know that we need to work really, really hard to make sure we create the best possible environment for our students and our kids to be able to balance these stresses and to have the best experience they can have. I know that I'm proud to be part of the community, and I take my responsibilities to the students, to the community, to the teachers, to the administration, and to my fellow Board members very seriously. And I will endeavor to continue to do that and do the best I possibly can for everyone. But I also really do appreciate and understand the work that's gone on with the staff and some of my fellow Board members throughout the summertime to set the stage properly for a really good experience for everybody. So, in particular, I do appreciate the work of the volunteer Board members. We've had a series of different meetings going on where I have had a chance to see a lot of people really go above and beyond. So I, I really like seeing that, and I think that's a good modeling for all of us to see. Any rate, the work that's gone on with the volunteer Board members and the staff is going to result in many more good things that are going to benefit the district. So as we start this new school year, and there are a lot of competing interests and things at hand, I just want to thank everybody for joining us together in creating the best possible District 115 we can. I think with this kind of camaraderie and this kind of work together, we will continue to make sure that Lake Forest High School will be the best possible high school experience it can be for our, for our kids. So with that, it's a new school year. I see we have some new officers from the high school. Welcome. I look forward to getting to work with you, and I appreciate your dedication and your commitment to serve. So, I will now turn it over to our Superintendent Mike Semick.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lane. I'll hand off to Dr. Holland to begin.
Good evening. We have two new student reps this year who will provide us with information and updates from the student perspective. Please welcome our overall student body president, Sarah Byers, and our Vice President, Bridget Mitchell. They're going to tell you a little bit about themselves and give you a few updates.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Byers. I am a triplet, so my brother and sister and I have all been a part of District 67 and 115 for a while now. I play soccer. I've been a part of Student Council the last four years, and I help run a volunteer club at the school called Women's Club.
Hi, I'm Bridget Mitchell. I am the Student Body Vice President, and I also play soccer. And I also run Women's Club with Sarah. And next year, I will be attending Northwestern University to continue playing soccer as well.
So one of our main goals this year for Student Council is to implement more school spirit and participation within Student Council. We've had just not a lackluster effort, but I think there's always been improvement for our student, for like our school spirit. And I think this year, we're taking a lot of initiative with that. We have a really great school spirit representative. Her name's Lexi Conley. She wasn't able to be here tonight, but she's been helping us just get like rolling and get different things enacted for this year.
And so kind of our duty as Student Council is to just influence our peers around us to take on that school spirit and just to participate in as much as we can. And so we're kind of taking it upon ourselves to be the role models in this case. You know, we're the, we're the kids who are going to the away football games, you know, no matter if they're an hour away. We're just kind of taking it upon ourselves to be the role models in this case. And so that's what we're really focusing on, especially this early in the year where we have homecoming coming up, which we'll talk about later. But there's just a lot in the beginning of the year that if we participate in a lot early, then it'll continue to be strong throughout the year.
So even though it may seem small, some of the things we're doing are monthly Senior Spirit Days. And we had our last one on Friday last week, and it was just like USA dress up. But it was really cool to see all the seniors dressed up in USA, walking down the halls. And then at our football game, we had, even for an away game, we still let a lot of people go, which was really exciting. We've changed up Spirit Week, so we have just different ideas and dress up days that we haven't had before. And then this year for Student Council, we're doing something new for homecoming. We're doing a Hawaiian-themed homecoming. And so we're adding in like, kind of like a luau-themed barbecue, which is really exciting. And then we have shirts sold the week before as usual with like the class distinction, and seniors got a big 20 on the back, which is exciting.
Yeah, so basically Sarah kind of said it, but we're just kind of trying to revamp the whole homecoming idea. We're revamping the pep rally. We've taken just some more of the non-interesting aspects of it. We've just completely cut those, and we're filling it with more interesting activities and stuff that'll really get the crowd excited to be at the pep rally. And then also, like she said, we're changing the Spirit Days just to improve participation. And then also, hopefully, if we can get this pep rally to be somewhat like significantly better than other pep rallies, we've talked with Mrs. Clegg, who's our supervisor for Student Council, about potentially having a pep rally in the winter to support the sports for spring and winter, because right now, our pep rally only highlights the sports and their captains from the fall. So, we hopefully will have one in the winter that could somewhat maybe tie in with turnabout or like a, or a basketball game. So that's kind of our goal with this pep, pep rally is to get the ball rolling, hopefully, for the winter.
And then regarding the logistics behind Student Council this year, we have less meetings with longer meeting times. We have the most amount of kids in Student Council this year than we've had previously. And we have a lot more represent, like a lot more representatives helping us with like different committees, and we're meeting a lot more as an executive branch. So we have like a weekly meeting with the student, with overall Student Council. The next week would be your individual classes, and then the following week, just the executives. I think that's what we have to update.
Thank you.
So I have a few things. I want to thank everyone who attended open house. It was a very well-attended event, and it was particularly, particularly great to see parents of upperclassmen that evening. I feel like the halls were filled. I feel like there were more people than usual, and it was just a great opportunity. Hopefully, everyone learned more about our course offerings and were able to engage with our educators. Also want to thank the APT for providing treats to our teachers and also for the participation of all of our parent groups, as well as Tech Campus. Our fall sports, clubs, and activities are underway. We have a lot of offerings and a lot of ways for students to get and stay connected. If anyone is wondering more about what we offer and would like to speak with someone, our Student Activities Director, Mrs. Malik, is definitely available to connect, to talk with parents, as well as to connect students to the opportunities we have. Also, in athletics, there are a variety of ways that students can stay connected. We have, in addition to actually playing on a team, there are often positions such as managers, statistician, statisticians, filmers, and the like. And our athletic directors are also available to talk with anyone interested. We are currently preparing for the relaunch of our Executive Functioning Tutoring that's available to any and all students interested in receiving the support. We offer this, we will begin this in October. October 1st is the first day. We will offer it after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Last year, we had a steady group of students who attended, and we also track their progress. And so it's not a hands-off experience of students. It's a great time for students to work with another adult who is trained in this area to create systems of organization, to review work completion, and to receive help with prioritizing time. Those are just some examples of the type of support that they offer. And our teachers and staff members are very supportive in this manner. Who thought we would ever talk about attendance awareness a week? But September 9th through the 13th is Attendance Awareness a Week for Lake County. Our deans have entered our school into a contest to compete against other local high schools with attendance this week. So we are hoping to have the highest attendance rate for the week. There are friendly competitions happening across classes. And as I mentioned, we've come a long way with improvement, with improvements to our attendance, and we are happy that we are now able to enter these type of events, not just to compete, but also to continue to express the importance and increase awareness regarding important, importance of being at school and engaging. Finally, in partnership with PALS, tomorrow is our theater open house from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. If parents or students are interested in finding out ways to get involved in our theater program, please make plans to attend. There are a lot of positive opportunities for students within theater, and the staff is super excited to share the opportunities and to showcase our theater program, our extracurricular theater program, as well as our course offerings. And that's tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
And finally, super, a couple words on things that I think are particularly important around the school district. So this past week, Lake Forest High School welcomed parents and community members to our annual open house. This is our opportunity for parents to meet their students' teachers and learn about the courses that their students will be in for the semester year. And I'd like to applaud Dr. Holland, our administrative team, our teachers, and our staff for yet another impressive showing. This evening is one of my favorite events of the entire year. And that's because every year, any number of parents communicate afterwards that they actually wish they could go back to high school. And that's because of the breadth of the curriculum, the passion of the staff, the values of involvement, engage, and engagement that are evident throughout the entire building. And well begun is half done, as the German idiom goes. And again, I'd like to thank everyone for an auspicious start to the 2019-2020 school year. So, thank you.
That's great. Thank you, guys. A lot going on, indeed. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board? Okay, seeing none, the strategic plan, Mike Semick.
So I will try to be brief and concise in this. So, the district has a set of milestones that are connected to a vision and a mission statement. And I'm going to speak briefly to a strategic plan here, and that is how the vision will be delivered, along with some indicators of success. What is also part of the overall plan is that there are building goals as well. So there's a building plan that is more granular than the strategic plan. And all of these things then work in concert, one with another, driving ultimately towards accomplishing the district mission, vision, and the milestones. We have six milestones, which are mini-vision statements for six different areas of the organization. The first three are often bundled together because it's hard to parse them, one from the other. We've agreed as a board, or the Board has agreed, that there are a set of key performance indicators, and these are they. Freshmen being on track for college and career readiness. The number of students that we have and pre-college coursework. We have student attainment, which is do kids reach a certain minimal level to be, in order to move forward successfully in language arts. We also have a growth component there, so it's not just attainment, but ensuring that students are growing. Attendance, as Dr. Holland has mentioned. The first thing that's important in every type of work is that people actually show up. And I hear this all the time from various employers. We have placed a strong emphasis on co-inextracurricular participation. That's not just in athletics, but in clubs. And we continue to embrace a really strong initiative for maintaining kids' social and emotional well-being. And we're going to measure that through our students' respect for diversity and their level of connectedness in their school. And finally, we have a financial indicator of, of our fund balance as, as our indicator of financial health. There are a variety of different components. Within the strategic plan on the bottom, there are a number of different places where we get data. So we have a suite of assessments now that we did not have several years ago, and this looks like it's going to be a consistent set of metrics for us. So our students take the SAT, known as the PSAT. There's an eight, there's a nine. The high school has chosen to only use the nine component of it. Another in 10th grade, and finally, the culmination of that is the SAT that students take in grade 11. All students in the state of Illinois must take this SAT. We do, by the way, as, as a caveat to this, we still have about 95% of our students that take the ACT. So that means that 95% of our students' parents are willing to write one or more checks because it is now at family expense to take the ACT. However, the SAT is the universal measure that we have for all students. We also get a fair amount of data off the Illinois State Report Card, ECRIS. That's known as, that is a portal for our data analysis group, known as ECR. We have our internal measures. These are systems that we've created in the building to measure attendance now. We also keep very close track on who is participating in co-inextracurricular activities. Last year, we had a very detailed report from Ashley Malik talking about, these are the number of students that are not connected, and these are the sorts of things that we're doing in order to reach them. Of course, every year, our kids change, and so we're going to have a new group of freshmen that we want to reconnect. One of the things I emphasize over and over again with parents is first semester freshman year is really, really important in every way, and connecting them to the building is among those most important things. Some parents tend to think, "I'm going to hang back and let my student take something in the spring." What they discover is so many kids are busy in the fall that they don't have all that many kids to hang around with outside of school. So getting them connected is really important. And then the CSCI, that's the Comprehensive School Climate Indicator. This is one of, this is where we get the data on the level of connectedness and the degree of respect for diversity within the building. One of the things that has emerged from that is we have a perspective on our most vulnerable students in the building. While not by name, we know them by groups because they identify themselves. And so we have a group particularly vulnerable in the building that are students that identify with any sort of gender identification issues of any kind. And that continues to be a group that are a full point below on every measure, and one point is a very significant difference. So that's a group we will continue to pay very close attention to and their safety and well-being in the building. Overview of the milestones and, and the work we're doing here, but I want to focus on one particular aspect of that. And, and that is where these things are leading to. And so we are going to invest really significantly in our staff in differentiation and professional development for them, and inclusive practices. And inclusive practices are for all students in the building because at any moment in time, a student can have whatever sort of learning difference, whether that be a temporary anxiety issue or whether that be something that is more permanent or could have even been something that they had as, as a young child from birth. Also, best practices in assessment. We continue to work on assessment literacy within the building. And we want importantly, that second bullet is really important. Professional development is not just for our teachers. It is for every single staff member. If there's one data point that comes out over and over again when it comes to students feeling connected at school, is that they need one connection with at least one adult. And that can be a bus driver, that can be a secretary, it can be a custodian. If you were at graduation, not this past year, but the year before, there are two people that are not teachers in the building that got really big shout-outs from our kids. And one of them was a custodian, and the other one is a permanent sub in the building. Why? Because they do stuff that connects kids to them and the building. We are going to apply rigorous hiring and evaluation processes across the entire district in every position that we hire. Importantly, we're also going to be increasingly finding different ways to communicate our story. And I think we have a very compelling story and an important one that people really care about. The Lake Forest High School building itself is the most beautiful high school structure in the state, but it's also the flagship of the community. community. It is the building in the community that everybody looks to. It's why people move here. It's why people are proud every time they drive by it, and we want people in the building and outside the building to know our story and tell it. We also want to connect our community through partnerships inside the building, through things like the Innovation Incubator, but also outside the building, sending more and more students to things like open doors. So if you haven't volunteered to have a kid come with you to your place of work, I suggest that you contact Jim Sullivan and ask to do that. What we hear from adults every single year is that was the single best day of their year. And what we hear from kids was, that really changed everything, I think, about what I want to do with my life after high school. So, very meaningful. We want to improve our facilities and the support that they come, and KPI-driven aspirations across the building. That means we want kids to be more connected. We want them to continue to be well. One of the things that has come out in the course of our visits in other buildings is the work that occurred in 2006, and we've learned that prior to 2006, you can think of it as the atrium. We tend to call it the commons, but there are three floors. Before that structure existed, our kids were hanging out in hallways, and people were stepping over them. What we hear from our students and our staff is more places for kids to gather and hang out together in structured and unstructured ways. We want to create more academic supports for all students that all students then utilize, and we want to improve our academic outcomes for all of our kids. So, what's that master facility look like, and why is the facility, what's on tap for our facility master plan? There are several key dates. One of them is our next board meeting in October. So Perkins &amp; Will has already met with the Facility Oversight Committee. They will come and meet with the entire board next month, and they'll present their summary findings. From, after that meeting, they'll go out to the community and all stakeholders, that's students, that's parents, that's members of the community that wish to meet with them, and they'll vet their ideas through them, and then they'll come back to the board again and say, hey, this is what we heard. I would say always to be careful not to discount any individual voice, because every single time you do one of these things, somebody comes out with a brilliant idea that nobody's ever thought of before. We got one of those from our staff, relative to the consideration of where we will have our adult program. It's currently downstairs in a facility that we're not terribly happy with down here, that needs significant renovations, and one of the ideas from the staff was, hey, why don't you look at acquiring a house downtown in the city so the kids can walk to everything that they do there? It's a brilliant idea, and it would probably be less expensive to do. It would also open up space here that we could potentially rent. And then finally, Perkins &amp; Will will come back in February with a final proposal. That will be the summation of all of the life safety examination that they have done, and also all the ideas that they have for changes that they're recommending to the board for the facility improvements that have to do with athletic, or academic, or social and support structures within the building. So that completes the strategic plan. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
I have one question. I need, I need education again on differentiation, which you've given to me before, but I need to hear it again.
So, in differentiation, one of the, so if you think back and how you went through school, you walked into the class, and you began on page one and chapter one, and you marched your way through it. Whether you needed that or not, or knew half of it or not, you got it all over again. So differentiation is giving students what it is that they need. So think of kindergarten, if you will. That's maybe the most vivid example. You have kids that are pre-literate. They don't know their letters. They don't know any words. And you have other students who are reading. That teacher figures out how to work with all of those students in a variety of different ways. So it's not just instruction, however. It's also assessment. So the way that we allow students to represent their learning also needs to be differentiated based on students' interests or students' strengths. There are times when a pencil and paper assessment is, that's the way it needs to be done, but frankly, that is relatively rare. So students can represent their learning through video. They can represent that through speech. You can represent that through writing at times, but there's a wide range of different ways that kids can represent their learning. The way that we all went to school, there was one way, and that was handwriting. And what you find is, when you change the assessment, you get a whole different set of kids that wind up being really, really strong in that particular area. So it is the approach, how students receive information, how they then process it as well. That can be in big groups, little groups, individually. It can be physical. It's all sorts of different ways for them to interact with the material once they get it, and then finally, how it is that they represent their learning. The key thing with the differentiation in all instruction, it is not about how students are, whether students are doing this. It really is a reflection on how effective the teacher has been. It's a reflection back to them of how successful I have been in my approach. How successful have I been in communicating what I want our kids to know and be able to do by the end of a day, a week, a month, a year, whatever it happens to be.
That was really helpful. I appreciate it. As long as I'm still talking, I have one more question. It actually goes back to Dr. Holland's part of the presentation. You were talking about the launch again of executive functioning, which I think is fantastic. One of the cornerstones that was fairly simple but important was the adoption, I think, of Schoology as our, that. And I'm curious if you've been satisfied with the participation, adoption rate from the faculty and from the students?
Well, we had a multi-year implementation plan, recognizing how people learn, as well as what it would take to engage all stakeholders. That's students, staff, and parents, because everyone plays a role in, played a role and has played a role in implementation. Overall, we are very happy with the process. We are in our last group of educators to come on board. Three years was the timeline. Everyone's expected to be on board this year. We've continued with ongoing professional development over these three years, allowing people to get in where they fit in for the most part, as well as creating some non-negotiables in terms of how Schoology is going to be used, so there's a level of consistency across courses. We still have some work to do there, but we expect all educators to use it to communicate expectations. As a way, we expect everyone to use it as a way of housing materials. So if your student is absent, they should be able to go on Schoology to find out what they missed, possibly get notes, or at least know what the homework is. The use of our calendar is a part of that. We're also building in uses for assessment within Schoology. So overall, we've been very happy with the implementation process, but now we are digging in on making sure that it's more consistently being used across our teachers, so students aren't having a varied experience as some of them have had in the past.
I appreciate it, and I'm sorry, I redirected. It was, it's important, and I was wondering if, and I apologize for doing it out of order. I'd be curious, at the end of the first semester, if you can, and I'll try to remember to ask this of you, if you can tell us if you're happy with where it is at that point in the school year as well.
At the end of this semester?
So, yeah, at the end of the first semester.
One of the things I want to mention is, one of the biggest areas of feedback that we've received are from families with students with IEPs or 504 plans. Just knowing that Schoology exists has helped a lot of students. Of course, we teach students how to manage their own materials and things like that, and some people worried that we would be removing that responsibilities from students, that responsibility from students if we adopted a learning management system. One of the things we tried to do was level the playing field with that, as well as to teach students how to monitor their own work through it. But it has been very helpful for our students who miss school for a variety of reasons or have special accommodations to have that as a resource. Most importantly, it's been helpful for their parents to know that they have a default, and they can log in and see what their child missed, or what they need to do to support them at home as well.
No, that's great. It's one of the, I think, really significant things that we've done in the last several years, because one of the challenges that we had was if, we have seven board members, assuming that a student had seven hours in the day, first hour, a teacher wrote the assignment on the board for the day, right? Second hour was, I have a Google. You go to a Google website of some kind. Third was yet another type of learning management system, and so on and so on. So if you're a painfully shy kid, and your first hour class, you miss, the expectation is, well, contact another kid in the class. You don't know who the kids are. You don't know their numbers. There's no way that you want to reach out to them. So what is that done? That has limited that student's ability to participate through a really unnecessary means. So by all seven of you having a common platform, it completely changes kids' ability to access stuff, and for students who don't have a lot of bandwidth to begin with, it fundamentally changes the task, because imagine having seven different places where you have to get your information, figure out what is expected of you, and then execute against that. An awful lot of our kids are too disorganized, frankly. Think of your freshman entering the building, and what a daunting task that would be to figure out seven different people's system. That's before you do your homework. That's just trying to figure out what you missed for the day. And so Schoology is a game changer for lots of kids. And so we talk about inclusive practices and differentiation. Differentiation of seven different things is not what we want in that regard. We want a common platform for everybody. And that same thing should be true of grading scales and different expectations about academic achievement of a variety of different ways, that these things should be made common. That's work yet to be done. Homework policies, how much does homework count towards grades, and so on and so on. All those things are factors. But I think the basis, the beginning point, is trying to have everybody speak the same language, because I'll tell you, we had a ton of kids that didn't have the bandwidth to figure out the homework and do it both, and it's really changed things. One of the big successes from open house, in my opinion, is the fact that every single classroom you go into, the teacher says, well, on Schoology, you'll see this. So every one of your, every single classroom that we went into as parents, we got that, every single one. And that's totally different than it was five years ago.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mike? All right, so Mike, thank you. Before we head into committee reports, I did want to reference some of the stuff that the strategic plan reminded me of. First of all, I saw a really nice review of KPIs. I wanted to take a minute and thank John Noble, as well as Mike, and Jen, and others who have worked together to try to get us to the point where we have an aligned group of KPIs that we will be monitoring now regularly. I think that's great. Further, on the full presentation of the strategic plan, what I liked is, was the communication. In fact, even your example of differentiation, that was a very thorough, good explanation of differentiation. And also, it was interesting that we were talking about communication in the Schoology. And so I think, I did want to just say real quick, I really appreciate the fact that Mike led a session for us, the board members, as well as some of the administrators, on August 26th, that I think went a long way towards extending communication and understanding of our strategic plan, and really how it's an extension of our mission, values, and milestones. And I wanted to take a minute to thank Mike for doing that, and I wanted to thank Rebecca for attending that, and Jen for attending that, and Shayla for attending that, as well as Jordan, and obviously, all the board members. I think that the communication enhancement that occurred in that session will serve us well, as we understand and rally around the strategic plan, and proceed into this really new, exciting evolution of where we're at with the master plan and the different facilities aspects we'll be looking at. So, thank you. I think that's, it was a good thing. All right, having said that, now I wanted to move into the education committee, and Tom Nimikas.
Our meeting is coming up in October, and there is a conflict with a large assessment, so we're probably moving it from the 16th to the 17th, assuming it fits the calendars. So, I will hopefully have Eileen send out the update tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Finance and Ops?
We'll be meeting, our fall meeting will be October 9th, and several members of the community have sent in applications to join us as the community members at large, and we'll be getting in touch with them this week to conduct interviews and make final appointments before that first meeting.
Great, thank you. Policy Committee, Ted?
You'll see, tonight, we do have a first reading of press issue 101, and also a first reading of five-year updates. Most of the five-year updates were just clarification and updating new statutes and laws that they comply with.
Okay, thank you. EdRed, John?
Yeah, in regards to EdRed, I think most of this, we've talked about. The Property Tax Relief Task Force has actually met a couple times. That's being led by the governor, and they've got basically, I think, seven or eight subcommittees. So this will be attached in the minutes, and anybody can certainly review it. But where we're trying to push EdRed is into two initiatives. One, to really make sure our voice is heard within the Property Tax Task Force, and get those updates as soon as possible to understand the direction of where they're going. It impacts several different things that we've all talked about in the past, from the tax levies, how to maybe change that formula, school district consolidation potentially, and other types of things that would have impacts in our future and how we handle things. The other thing that's interesting is trying to get EdRed around a list of unfunded mandates and getting a cost understanding of those mandates to the school districts, to try to get some type of initiative into the state to basically say, how do we maybe redo the regulations that are being put upon us, to either have them removed and then re-legislated into maybe more up-to-date or purposeful ideas? So, we'll see if that comes to pass. That is a heavy lift for them. They may break that into several parts, but we have some polite promises that they may have some things to us, at least to review or look at, in October to November. So I will stay on with those types of things and move forward as, and bring up, us up to speed as we find out more.
Great, thank you. NSED, Ted?
Yes, so, NSED, we had our meeting a week ago, and things that came out of the meeting, well, actually, a lot of it occurred over the summer. We changed our school hours at the North Shore Academy. That was to better align with the high school and other schools so that NSED students can more easily participate in after-school activities at their home schools. And there were some hiccups with the transportation, but I think those have all been cleared up. Like, Lake Forest High School, NSED is starting collective bargaining with the two bargaining units, and we'll be using Tony Louiezy from Hodges &amp; Louiezy as our facilitator, and representing and working with the administration. Also, we are working on a brand refresh, and since I often, you know, stumble with words, part of that is changing our name, so it's no longer going to be the Northern Suburban Special Education District, or Northern Suburban Special District Foundation. So we're looking for something easier to pronounce and that better suits what we actually do, which is not really special education. It's education for all the kids, and that's really where NSED is going. As students are more and more, and Lake Forest High School actually is the leader in this, bringing more and more kids back into the home district, we're finding that NSED is now deploying. we're finding that NSSED is now deploying teachers and staff to help at the 18 individual districts. And along with that means we have to change our financial model. And one of the ways, you know, we're doing that is looking at ways, working with the 18 business offices to find a more equitable way to bill. And billing has changed significantly, and also the timing of billing has changed. That will continue to change as NSSED continues to evolve. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we move on to a series of action items. And I remember last time, we were like cruising through these things, and I think that I forgot to suggest the exact mechanism by which we will vote on these things. So just as a matter of course, I'm going to ask for a motion and then a second. And once we achieve the second, we'll open up each motion for any conversation prior to the vote. Okay? So our first one is, I'd like to ask, may I have a motion to adopt the 2019-2020 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, before any roll call vote, I think we already had Jen present. We had an opportunity to ask questions then, but does anybody else have anything else that they wanted to add or ask?
No, I would just want to add briefly, thank you to Jen and her team for the amount of time and energy that it took to do that. And it was very insightful, and I was glad to be part of the committee meeting with Sally that she led probably a month and a half ago or so, whenever it was. But thank you again.
Good. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next up, approval of administrator and teacher salary and benefits report. May I have a motion to approve the administrator and teacher salary and benefits report?
So moved.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions anybody has on this? All right, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the superintendent 2019-2020 compensation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of press issue 101 and five-year updates as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ted talked a little bit about this earlier. Are there any other questions or commentary before we proceed to roll call?
I do have one item I wanted to point out. One, so press makes recommendations, and then we consider whether we want to adopt them as being appropriate to our district. And the one that we elected not to follow was for colon 20 fund balances. I think it's the right recommendation, but I wanted to at least point it out. The recommendation from press is a policy of maintaining a fund balance of between 15% and 20%. Our current policy is at 10%, which we are in excess of, but not extremely. I think it's something that we have to continue to think about, continue to watch. The other thing I would say is, if I am quoting correctly what I've learned from Jennifer, we are able to keep a 10% threshold, although again, we've exceeded it, and not affect our bond rating because of the excellent financial management that the district enjoys. But one of the things that you said in the past, when we meet with lenders, you have had to explain to their satisfaction is that our fund balance is relatively low. So I just, it's worth mentioning. I don't disagree with the recommendation.
Right, and just to follow along with that, the reason we go with 10% is we're basically reliant on property taxes, which for us is very stable. You know, we aren't in a, you know, factory situation where, you know, one factory shuts down and we lose half, or a situation where you receive most of your funding from a state, such as a, you know, very low-income district. So unless all the homes in Lake Forest turn the lights out and move south, we're going to see those revenues year in, year out.
I'd add one thing to that, and that is, in addition to our heavy reliance or benefit from our local property taxes, is the fact that we have exceptionally high rates of property tax collection. And so we, I have very, very predictable revenue streams because of that that are notably higher than virtually any district in the entire state.
Yeah, I think the last one was 99.7%.
Yeah, we have not zero, but near zero delinquent taxes every year.
Okay, good. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next motion, may I have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for library services in the amount of $500?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we vote on this, and Mike, you may need to add some commentary on this. But generally, it is our belief that all the students who go to Lake Forest High School should have an open and unfettered access to our libraries and to the library systems. And this allows for us to have the students who are in the Knollwood area be able to use the Lake Bluff Public Library. So this is just part of our general policy of making sure we serve all students and make sure that we ensure the best possible benefits for all students, regardless of any other aspects of their lives. So are there any questions or comments, or did you want to add anything on that?
Well said, I couldn't have done a better job.
Okay, and as usual, I've questioned whether us as a district should give our money to another entity. And my concern with that is if there are, you know, Knollwood residents don't pay for a library district. So in effect, Lake Bluff residents pay twice for themselves and for Knollwood residents. And my concern is if we have 25 kids from Knollwood, the way it works is they have to go in and get a library card, and they're automatically issued it. And the fees are really to cover the cost of issuance. But I really think that a small fee like that, it would be appropriate for the Knollwood resident to pay the $20 fee, and they would still have access.
I appreciate your perspective. Are there any other, thank you for sharing it. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, can we proceed with the roll call vote?
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
I'll surprise everybody, aye.
Motion carries.
Big softy. May I have a motion, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Roth 457 Plan?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Does anybody want to add any commentary around this?
This is a retirement vehicle that comes at no expense to the district. So should anybody want to avail themselves of this, they can do that. All it is, is a piece of paper that we fill out with our vendor. Again, no cost to the district.
But I do think it's a wonderful thing that we offer to our staff and employees.
Great, all right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, may I have a motion to approve the final 2018-2019 calendar?
So moved. Second.
Okay, before we vote, Mike, why are we approving the final 2018-2019 calendar?
Because state law requires that we do so, and so if this confirms what we did, if there are any minor adjustments in any way, shape, or form, we do that. This is a perfunctory thing that we're required to do. And then we have to pass it on to the ROE, who then passes it on to the state board.
Okay, any questions, comments? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing discontinuation of educational support service position and ratifying improving hiring of special education teaching assistants?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, questions or commentary?
Essentially, this just takes the position from 1.6. Eliminates that, makes it a 1.0 FTE.
So it eliminates one position in one particular area, and then it also winds up having that person that was in that moving into another position as a teaching assistant. But we would have hired, we would have needed to hire for that teaching assistant anyway. So it's actually a reduction in cost and a reprioritization within one department of the school.
How about that? Okay, any questions or commentary, more? Okay, may I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or commentary? All right, may I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of dispersments, payrolls, and financial statements for June 2019, approval of IMRF authorized agent, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, July 15, 2019, minutes of an executive session, July 15, 2019, minutes of a special board meeting, August 26, 2019, minutes of an executive session, August 26, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Dr. Nimikas?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. FOIA requests, we've received two, Empower, are we fulfilled two? Empower Illinois, status complete, and John Bowman, status complete. Announcements, February, or Friday, February, sorry, I'm moving right along. Let's think of that winter pep rally. It's getting confused. Friday, September 20, 2019, I was doing fairly well prior to that. But Friday, September 20, 2019, is Homecoming. Saturday, September 21, is Homecoming Dance. Saturday, October 5, Be True to Your School, at 7:00 PM, Lake Forest Club. And Monday, October 7, will be our next Board of Education meeting right here at the Lake Forest High School Boardroom, West Campus. Before I adjourn, are there any other questions or anything else that we didn't cover? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.